Welcome to Needham School Spotlight. I'm Dan Goodie-Kanst, Superintendent of Schools, and welcome back to the 2016-17 school year. I'd also like to welcome this afternoon our school committee vice chair Heidi Black and our school committee chair Sue Neckes.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining me. I thought it would be great to begin the year with a conversation about the work ahead this year and in particular some of the priorities the school committee has for the schools and the children of Needham. I thought though, actually, before we begin, I'd want to remind everybody that you've both been serving the community in a variety of capacities for many years and on the school committee Heidi now for...
This is my eighth year.
Your eighth year in the school committee and Sue?
I'm in my fifth. I'm the junior member of the leadership team.
You're the newbie. Wow. Well, and I'm beginning my 11th year in this role of superintendent and it, I think it's been a great ride. It's a real personal joy and privilege for me to work with both of you and with your colleagues on the school committee and with a great staff and families and of course our students. Well, why don't we get right into it and actually, the town of Needham and several communities just had a vote recently, the Minuteman vote.
Yes.
So what happened?
Yes, we had big news. The vote passed. This is to ensure that we can build a new Minuteman vocational and technical high school, which we rely on in our community to provide that kind of education for students who choose it. And the building is really old and in big need of improvements, so it was determined over many years of analysis that the best way to go forward with Minuteman was to build a new building and it has MSBA support, but it needed to be ratified by all the towns that are members. And so yesterday there was a big, or on September 20th, there was a vote and it passed overwhelmingly. So this will go forward, the funding will go forward.
Right, and I have to say, I'm thrilled with the turnout. We know lots of people worked really hard to make sure that Needham voters and Needham citizens understood first of all, the importance of Minuteman, the need for Minuteman, and then to encourage them to get out and vote yes for Minuteman. So I would personally like to thank all of the volunteers, all of the people that sent emails to their friends, certainly all of the people that went out to vote, but in particular, our selectmen, Mary Ann Cooley and Dan Matthews really led the charge for a very long time in this process to get us to the point where we can say today that Needham had the highest turnout of all of the towns.
The highest percentage of yes votes.
Highest percentage of yes votes, something to be proud of.
Yes.
So many thanks to them and to everybody that turned out.
Absolutely.
Well, it's great and it means that the project will move forward and our kids will continue to really get a superb vocational and technical education at Minuteman. And you know, when you mentioned Mary Ann and Dan, it reminds me that here you have, with the selectmen, you have a group of folks dedicated to really shepherding that process. I mean, they really were very much focused on it. You are focused on the business of the Needham Public Schools. They've, you know, are your partners really in many ways in many projects and things that go on that the reality is the Needham School Committee works closely with the selectmen and the finance committee and other town boards really to help meet the needs of children in Needham. It doesn't happen that way everywhere as we know. In some communities, there's not that much cooperation and collaboration, but it does happen in Needham and I think part of it, the work ahead, that collaboration, will involve you working with committees and other town meeting members to talk about some of your priorities. You have five ambitious priorities for this year that we'll talk about and as I've thought about your priorities, I'd categorize them in, you know, in three perhaps broad areas. One, space needs. We'll talk a little bit about learning opportunities. And thirdly, human resources and making sure we meet the needs of our staff. So maybe Sue, why don't we start off a little bit about some of those space needs? What are some of the things the school committee is talking about, interested in, focused on this coming year?
Sure, so certainly one of the priorities we've had for a while that continues is space at the high school. The high school is, has a population that was not anticipated at the time it was expanded. We are excited that we have, and we'll talk more about, a new cafeteria, an expanded cafeteria this year, which is great, but we really need more classrooms and that's a huge priority for us that we want to see go forward. The other is our Hillside school has been in the works to be replaced for quite some time and we are in a good place to move that ahead this year. And finally, I would say that we're gonna, you know, we can talk about full day kindergarten, but one of the critical challenges for full day kindergarten is space. So that's another one, another place where space plays out as a key priority for us.
Spaces, since I've been in Needham, space has always been a challenge. It's of course, one of the reasons you've been prevented from having full day kindergarten in the community because the desire has been there and I know we'll talk about that in a few moments. Let's talk a little bit about the high school. Heidi, you serve on the permanent public building committee along with Erin Seacott, the principal at Needham High School to begin actually what I consider the first phase of an expansion at Needham High. So what's happened over the last year at Needham High School?
Well, we have just this year opened up the addition to the cafeteria. That was what I guess we could consider to be the first phase of ongoing phasing needs at Needham High School for space. The cafeteria was overcrowded. It just simply couldn't serve the number of students that needed to eat within that very short lunchtime during the school day. We've expanded. It is also a space that has many uses. It is functional for meetings, for large groups, not just for serving and having students have seats available to have lunch. It's also beautiful space, bright, lots of windows. In fact, many people have commented to me that it looks as if it were built right when the school was originally built.
It does.
It just really kind of melded right into that.
Fits in.
Yeah, fits in, it's beautiful. So we're thrilled about that. The next phase will be the conversation about adding classroom or instructional space to the high school. And right now, the PBBC is in the process of securing a designer who will study that for us. We feel, the school committee and the PBBC, that a new set of eyes, taking a look at what exists and how that might be repurposed or renovated or used in a different way along with or instead of an addition in some way at the high school is really what should be done next. Again, it's very different to have instructional spaces than cafeteria spaces, different kinds of spaces. So we are hopeful, we have a feasibility study out right now, asking for designers to submit and show their interest. So we're hoping by the beginning of November to have a designer that will be able to work with us to develop some options for us and what some plans might be moving forward to regain or to gain additional instructional space for students.
It would be great if the feasibility study could be completed by May town meeting. Not sure if that's possible, so this may take a little bit of time to get into the next phase. Just stepping back to the new high school cafeteria expansion this summer, I mean, the space provides technology, wireless technology for students. There are some screens, there's a partition so that the space actually, the new space can be used for, as you suggested, meetings or forums.
Very flexible.
Very flexible space and already students are enjoying it. So it's really, it's terrific, a much-needed space. At the high school, I mean, one of the challenges for folks who are listening to this conversation and thinking, well, didn't we just build Needham High School? It opened in 2008. It was designed for 1,450 students and I believe we're just, today, we're just shy of 1,700 students. So the enrollment is impacting what we're trying to do and where we're at. And that provides challenges because you end up impacting a student's day, a teacher's ability to work in a really thoughtful way with students rather than wandering around the building from empty classroom to find a classroom to teach in. And the enrollment story is going to remain the way it is. It's not, we're looking at a climb, pretty steady, and then it, you know, remaining where it's at. So it's not as if we're dealing with a bump or a bubble. It's something that will be with us for a long time. So there needs to be some step in that direction.
And I think that's why the school committee has advocated for this space for some time because we believe and we have data from an outside demographer that we have hired to do these kinds of enrollment projections in addition to what we've been able to do on our own that supports that this is going to be a long-term need, not just a short-term need. And I think that is what has placed the school committee in the position of being so certain that we want to move ahead with this, that this will be money well-spent, well-used over the course of a very, very long time.
And I think last year, you had organized a task force that brought together officials from across various town boards and in different capacities. And so I think that we were able to build consensus on the need for the space and an understanding, there was a lot of data analysis involved. And so I think there are people supporting us that understand how important this is to our schools.
Well, and I recall that one of the participants, one of the selectmen on the committee suggested that when we're thinking about the range of students that we are going to agree will be at Needham High School, we should go for the upper range closer to 1,800 where we believe we're going to be in really a few short years. So there is support and there's some interest in making something happen. Now it's a matter of getting the designers and town meeting and getting the funding in a row to actually make this a reality. Well, that is certainly a work in progress. The other thing that's imminent within the next two months is the vote on Hillside. So what's next for Hillside?
So let's just say that where we are right now is, it's been a long process, but a very well-thought-out process with, you know, community involvement and various boards involved. But this summer, the Mass School Building Authority, the MSBA, approved the schematic design and is entering into the funding stage with us. And so I think that the fall here is all about funding. We are at a stage where we are ready, we have, you know, really nice schematic designs and now we need both design and construction funding for Hillside to go forward. A new Hillside that would be built at the, on Central Avenue at the old Owens Farm. And in that, so in that process, we have two important steps coming up. One is that we need a vote at special town meeting on October 5th. And following that, we have our debt exclusion override as part of the presidential election on November 8th. It'll be a question that'll follow the state questions. We know at this point, there's four state questions, so beyond that, there will be another question, maybe question five, but we're not quite sure yet.
So the vote at town meeting is to appropriate the money pending a successful vote of the community on November 8th?
Now, the special town meeting has already, over, you know, the last several years, approved some of that funding that got us from feasibility...
Purchasing the land.
Right, buying the land, schematic design.
Right, design funds.
Right, so some of that we already have from town meeting. Actually, the entire project though gets approved for funding in the debt exclusion override on November 8th.
And the Hillside school, I think, is something that the entire community really understands the need to replace. The school is beyond its useful life. It was designed for probably half the size of the number of students that are in that building. We know that the infrastructure and the systems within the building from technology to heating and so forth are certainly not what we would call efficient and expect in the year 2016 for a building in Needham moving forward, amongst other issues with circulation on the site and just the kinds of things that get in the way of where we would like to see our students be in the future as far as learning and teaching is concerned. So there's been a very thoughtful process in designing and developing what the new Hillside school will look like, what it will contain. There's been input from everything, everybody from the teachers to the principal to parents, very, very open and transparent. And I think we have a wonderful design, and the exterior design and interior design as well.
It's going to be, I tell folks who ask that, conceptually, it's like an Elliott school.
Yes.
In that it has all the same features of an Elliott school, some additional extended learning spaces outside the classrooms and really is going to be very much open and bright as the Elliott school is.
And, I'm sorry, I think another thing the town can feel very proud of and confident about is that it's going to be a LEED certified building. So we are using the most...
Green school.
Green school, right.
Yeah.
You know, the technology and infrastructure that will allow it to be as energy efficient as a building can be built for this year and for the long term too. So I think it's a good investment for the community as well.
In fact, we don't actually expect the operating cost of the building to be any more than the current building, but some of the features that I really appreciate about the design that we have for a new elementary school is in addition to the extended learning, which allows I think for more project-based learning and more flexible classroom and teacher interactions, is that there's also space now for the curriculum that we have added. So there's a classroom for Spanish and a classroom for STEAM and some great space for art, both inside and outside the school. So, and it's also in a great setting and we're hoping that we'll have some trails similar to what we have behind Newman that will be a great resource for Hillside and for the community as a whole.
And I think again, designers take into consideration things like security, which is very, very important to all parents and to all residents of Needham, that our schools are places where kids can go and feel safe and secure. So there are features built in and principal's office located in an area where there's an ability to have a visual outside of the building and down the halls and so forth. So again, another thing that I think our community members can feel very comfortable and confident about when they are voting, we hope, in favor of moving this project ahead.
Well, there, a lot of folks were involved in, the designer had security, folks consider the building, our staff has been very much involved in the design of the building. And I think it's something that's right-sized for the neighborhood and the neighborhood will be extremely excited about. If folks go by the Central Avenue site, the former Owens poultry farm, they'll see soon, the building's coming down because that contract I believe has been signed or will be and there'll be some demolition occurring in anticipation of what we hope is a successful outcome to the vote.
Most of the buildings are coming down, a couple are remaining.
Oh, that's right.
For some time, one's going to be used as kind of the office.
That's right, as a construction trailer.
The office, right.
That's correct, that's right, that's right Heidi. So by the way, is it going to be called the Hillside School? That's one of the things that you have to talk about as a school committee.
This is true.
Yes, this is true.
Because the Hillside will, the existing Hillside Elementary School will remain as swing space for town and schools. So there has to be a new name.
This is a big question.
It's exciting.
It is. Well, that's something that you'll have to wrestle with after you, after the community, we hope, votes to support the project. And by the way, on that point, are you hearing any concerns about the project? Are you hearing your neighbors talking about it?
So I would say the one question I have heard recently is related to enrollment. People are concerned about is that, is it going to be the right-size school? And maybe because we've had some experience at the high school that would suggest otherwise, but I feel very good about where we are with respect to enrollment. So we had to negotiate with MSBA early on in this process and so some people may have heard that the number, that the population for students at the school was set at 430. And that concerns some people because the Hillside School is already at about 470?
450, 460.
460. And so I just want to say that I think we've done a really good job of working with our class sizes and with the planning for the school to make sure that although it's, we negotiated for 430, we actually know the capacity could go up to as high as 540. So we really do have the flexibility to bring, you know, to accommodate the student population that we need in that area. And it is really nice that it's still within the Hillside district. So that's been a big win for us.
Absolutely.
I think initially too, there were some current concerns on the part of neighbors about the traffic or the bus flow in and out of the building. And town meeting did vote to purchase another lot on that property that will help mitigate that. So that purchase of the property on Central Ave will allow buses to go in one way but out another that doesn't impact the neighborhood in the same way that a previous design before we owned that property would have required. So I think that's good news for the neighborhood as well.
Well, and there are two upcoming opportunities at least for the community to learn more about the project. Saturday, October 1st, the school committee is inviting specifically town meeting members, but actually the entire community to come to Hillside for an open house and informal conversations. If folks would like to tour the existing facility, informally chat with the school committee, that will be an opportunity from 9:00 AM till 10:30 AM on Saturday, October 1st. And then again, on Thursday, October 27th.
Yes.
At 7:00 PM at the center, at the Heights or the senior center, there'll be a presentation by the architect and some members of the permanent public building committee, school committee. So folks can get an opportunity to kind of see what the project is all about and understand the design process, ask questions and really kind of get ready for the vote several days later. So that will be, that will be great. Well, a lot is going on with space and construction and building and it's great because you're really prioritizing trying to find the right size and the right kind of space for kids for teaching and learning, which is all about, which is what it's all about and actually it's one of your next priorities and that is teaching and learning. And there, you know, there are two areas in there. One is with kindergarten that we refer to and also introducing technology tools into the schools. So let's talk a little bit about that. Kindergarten, what has the school committee done? They had a significant conversation over the last year and voted to do something that was, you know, pretty particular and important regarding kindergarten. Sue, what's happening on that front?
Right, so Needham is one of the few communities left in the Commonwealth that does not offer full-day kindergarten, although we are fortunate that we have a great enrichment program called CASE that many students or many families take advantage of. But we, we've been looking for full-day kindergarten for a long time and space has been a key reason that we haven't been able to offer it, but we have come to the conclusion and we voted in June that we would like to see compulsory full-day kindergarten, so we make it available and...
Free.
Free for all of our students. And now we are tackling those challenges and we expect to be able to make that happen within a few years. So, you know, given that space is an issue, it's conceivable that we'll be able to open it in conjunction with the opening of Hillside. But there are still some challenges even with that happening, even though we'll gain some classroom space at Hillside.
Right, I was gonna say, and Hillside, we know when we designed the building that full-day K was on the horizon. So I think another thing residents can feel good knowing is that that school will be prepared for full-day K. And there might need to be some juggling of classrooms or space within other schools throughout Needham.
You know, what that might look like, for example, is, well, certainly opening a new Hillside provides additional classroom capacity, which is huge. And then you have the existing Hillside school that will remain and that might provide a little bit of flexibility, but at a Mitchell or at a Broadmeadow, you may need to move another class around temporarily for a year or two to accommodate a full-day program. And the principals are already talking about that. We're already thinking about what might we do and to me, that's part of an implementation plan that we want to present to you to let you know what the impact will be. Aside from space though, there is a cost of full-day kindergarten. It's not just something we can turn on the light switch and say, let's happen. We have to hire teachers, we have to provide specialists and resources and materials. The school committee talked about a low end of 1.5 million to $2.5 million for full-day kindergarten. How do you pay for that in your budget?
Okay, that's a big question. The good news is that we are having those conversations with the town and we're looking at what the town revenues are likely to be like going forward and to what extent that that can support. And we don't really have the answers to those yet. Those are conversations we need to continue to have, but, you know, we feel pretty good that there's a good path to getting to full-day kindergarten and overcoming the challenges that we have.
And I would say that the school committee feels good that the information that we're getting from you and the folks that are working with you about what that means, what does it mean staff-wise, operating-wise, to offer full-day kindergarten. So we want to be sure that whatever plan is implemented is the best plan for the students that will be incoming to kindergarten in the Needham Public Schools.
And I know on that front that there's already work going on in the programming area under Terry Duggan to look at the curriculum and understand the frameworks and what that means and how, what we can offer in full-day kindergarten when we're ready to make that happen.
And I think we're beginning this year to unpack what our kindergarten teachers believe would be a strong program, what's the philosophy behind a full-day program and how do we, how do we get there? And then later this fall, I hope to bring to the school committee a proposal for when you could perhaps implement full-day kindergarten and then work with you to develop the specific steps necessary to actually make that happen. Well, full-day kindergarten is something long overdue and I have to applaud the school committee for making a stand and saying it has to be compulsory and equitable for all the children in Needham. That's a, that's an important and a really key step.
I would like, you know, I know that the task force we had working on full-day kindergarten did a lot of research, both talking to other towns and running focus groups of parents in our town, in our community. And that was a key piece of what they learned, is that in our community, the idea that it's equitable and fair and available to everyone was, you know, and free, was very, very important. And I think that we responded to that and I respect that that is what means, that's meaningful to our community.
One of the other areas that the school committee has spent a lot of time discussing is the implementation and the use of technology as tools in the classroom to support learning. You've launched an initiative beginning at the middle school level and beginning next year, in the freshman year at Needham High School, there will be a one-to-one program. Why don't we talk a little bit about what that means for kids and what's happening right now at the schools to prepare for that?
Right, so next year's freshman class is the class that started the one-to-one program in sixth grade.
With iPads at High Rock.
With iPads, right, at High Rock. And so they are totally immersed in the ideas of the one-to-one technology and having that tool available to them. And we want it to be ready for them when they arrive at the high school. So in preparation, there have been a number of pilots running at the high school this year and in the last several years, including the Greater Boston Project and Sophomore Academy. And I think about a dozen teachers across a variety of disciplines are actually working with Chromebooks in their classrooms this year. There's also a plan for professional development to get our teachers in the high school ready for this. And we are fortunate that we've learned a lot from our middle school experience and some of those teachers can help also. But unlike the middle school, which has relied on iPads, we expect that the high school is going to rely on Chromebooks and laptops and, you know, it's just a different need. I think it's because there's more writing that goes on and, you know...
Right, I think the nature of what kids are doing in high school is different than what they are doing in middle school. And I think, like you said, just the writing and actually just having a keyboard as opposed to necessarily a number of apps is probably where...
It lends itself at the high school level too. Well, we're very excited about that and a lot of work is going on, a lot of professional learning for staff members, students are piloting it at a variety of levels, so we're really, really excited about that. The last priority you have that I want to just talk about briefly is regarding our human resources, our staff. Our teachers are concluding some negotiations, administrators and teacher assistants are up. School committee has responsibility for those negotiating those contracts. What does that, what does that look like right now?
Well, let me start by saying that the school committee values the employees of the Needham Public Schools, whether they be teachers or our custodians or our food service workers or our teacher aides. They make our schools great and it is our goal to continue to try and negotiate fair and reasonable contracts. We want to keep people in the district, we want them to know we value the work that they do and we want to work collegially or collaboratively with them to negotiate the best contracts that we can, which is what we believe we have done with the first unit, which is the teachers' unit.
Right, and we're very close to the end of that process in getting a ratified contract. And I think that we, you know, we, as Heidi said, we really value our staff and we want to attract terrific talent. We also recognize that we have certain financial constraints and we have to work within that within our town. But I think that we've been able to really build good relationships with the NEA or the Needham Education Association, who we work with them as the union representatives and are able to achieve that. So once we're done the contract with the teachers, then we move on to administrators and our clerical and technical staff and so on. So hopefully by the end of this fiscal year.
Well, it's all about working very hard, which the school committee does, and developing those great relationships not only with the staff but also with the town boards to make all of this happen. And as we conclude here, I again remind the community, when I think about the work, your priorities, making sure that Hillside, the new Hillside school happens with the vote on November 8th, continuing to work on Needham High School's space needs, developing an implementation plan for kindergarten, for full-day kindergarten, the one-to-one technology initiative at the high school, and finally making sure that you're negotiating fair and sustainable contracts are all priorities that the school committee is involved in amongst some other work. So best wishes as we begin a new year and tackle those, that long list of priorities.
Thank you and we appreciate all the support that you give to us because without that, we couldn't continue on with the work that we have to do.
Well, thanks for the support and I look forward to the year ahead.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.